With the Cal awareness for sixteen thousand five hundred, case number is B five one five five two zero. The vote to settle was five zero. Item two, the city council voted to five zero to allow the city attorney to defend an appeal filed by Paul Cook regarding case number five two two seven four four four. All right, so at this point, I want to go ahead and open up the, let me just get to my agenda here. At this point, I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park City Council regular meeting. Today is April the sixth, twenty sixteen. The time is ten, at, ten, eleven. I want to first of all apologize for the late start of the meeting. So at this point, I'm going to have council member Ricardo lead us in an invocation, followed by the flag salute. So all those that are able to stand, please do so.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Please stand. Bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity we have to get together here with our community. Please bless all those, our soldiers and men and women that are, that are in harm's way, fighting for the public, for us, for all of us here back at home, for our firefighters and our, and our police officers and public safety. Keep them safe as they do their work in our community and inspire our leaders in this community to make the decisions for our community to the benefit of all of us. Amen.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to pledge to our flag, so please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Council members wishing to close on, anyone? Yes, council member Cruz Baca.
I would like to close on behalf of Yolanda Serrano. For those of you that knew, or if you ever went up Main Street and you saw that cake decorating place run by Memo and Yolanda, Yolanda passed away a week ago, and I'd like to close on her behalf. That was a wonderful little store there until they closed.
Thank you for recognition for that. Anyone else? At this point, and I will now have the city treasurer, Maria Contreras, lead us in the roll call.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Council member Cruz Baca.
You're.
Council member Ricardo Bacheko.
Present.
Council member Susan Rubio.
Present.
Mayor Potem, Monica Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Present. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to close the study session, and that's my motion.
Second.
Second by council member Cruz Baca. Any objections? See, none, so move.
Mayor, before we go forward, I'm sorry, I should have spoken earlier, but since we have everyone here and people tend to leave early, we just want to invite everyone to our farmers market and street fair, which will start from Thursdays from five P M. to nine P M. The beginning date is from April seventh through August fourth, so please come and participate. Thank you.
And Mayor, one more announcement.
Yes, council member.
We have, I'm very proud of a young man whose grandmother and mother grew up in Baldwin Park, and he was recently made third base coach for the Dodgers, and his name is Christopher Woodward.
Wow, that's awesome.
Yes.
And also, congratulations to our police for coming in fourth at the Baker to Vegas.
That's right. Congratulations. All righty, anyone other further announcements? All right. If not, at this point, we do have three different presentations, and the first one that we have is the presentation of proclamation recognizing April as D M V Donate Life California Month. Do we have any representative from the state, from D M V? I guess, oh, okay, all righty. Thank you.
Can I say a few words on behalf?
Yes, yes, go ahead. That's fine.
This is about being a donor. There's a lot of people in need, you know, when they get ill, we don't realize that sometimes we can help save a life, and I always share that I'm a donor in case something should, you know, happen to me, so we encourage all of you to also be donors. You know, we don't realize how important it is for, for someone whose family member is sick that really needs that help. So just encourage all of you guys to register as donors. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, council member Susan Rubio. All right, so the next presentation that we have, we'll go ahead and go with the recognition of, of California Golden Glove champion Roman Puga and then Thomas Gutierrez. So I'm going to have Manny Carrillo, the Park and Recs director, do the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and acknowledge two of our boxing participants today. On March fourteenth through the sixteenth, the Baldwin Park Boxing Club participated in the twenty sixteen Golden Glove statewide championship in Fresno, California. The event attracted well over four hundred and fifty male and female boxers throughout the state. The Baldwin Park Boxing Club, under the guidance of head coach Luis Rosales, entered two club members and participated in the week-long event. Roman Puga, nineteen years old, boxed in a hundred and forty-one weight class, while Baldwin Park resident Thomas Gutierrez, twenty-five years old, boxed in the hundred and fifty-two weight class. I'm hap, I'm happy to announce both Roman and Thomas captured the novice championships title in their respective weight class boxing in three exciting bouts to earn their title. The club was well represented, and the club members are very proud of their accomplishments. Additionally, I would like to thank the excellent staff of the assistant coaches, Sal Hernandez, Aris Ambries, and Thomas Gutierrez. Let's put our hands together and acknowledge both of them.
Thank you. Let's, go ahead, Manny.
In addition, Mayor, I would like for all of the boxing community that is, that are here tonight to stand up. They are a very tight-knit family. Please stand, all the boxing community.
All right, awesome.
Come on, guys, don't be shy. Thank you very much.
Well, let's, let's, let's have, we'll take a picture up here.
Yes, let's go ahead and have Thomas.
Come on up here.
Anne Renee, come on up.
[inaudible]
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm going to do a picture next.
Hopefully, yes.
Manny, Carrillo, you have a certificate?
It should be there, Mayor.
Oh.
We're going to take some pictures real quick.
Okay, which is Thomas Gutierrez?
Yes, we're going to get a picture. Let's do one with them, and then we'll bring the whole team. Hold on, Carrillo. Carrillo, don't forget.
You picture it, then I'll put cameras.
Say some words, guys. Come on up here. Okay, okay, both Thomas and Renee, come on up here, guys, say some words. How tough it is.
Baldwin Park Boxing Club. Well, I think our coaches, Luis, our boxing coach, Tommy as well, our teammates for all the hard work we put in and supporting us along the way, our family, of course.
Let's bring the coach, come on up here, the other boxers, let's do a quick snapshot up here.
I just want to say thank you to everybody that showed up today to show us support. I want to thank Manny Carrillo and Mike Salles for giving us this opportunity, and everybody here at the council for this recognition. And that's it. Thank you for everything.
Where's the coaches? Oh, okay. All right, all right, let's get in here. Get you in the middle, get the coach in the middle.
Guys, do you want us to call?
Yeah, let's get the team members up here. Come on up.
Manny, they want you in the photo. They want you in the photo.
Okay.
Take them, we're done.
They want you in the photos. What's your name?
Go ahead and get it, because it'll lock.
Do we all fit? Do we all fit?
Are you sure? Go in the middle. Oh, yeah.
All right, here we go. Do we all fit? You got to go back. All right, you guys, hold on, let's look at the camera. Get the conazo. All right, one more, one more.
One more, he says.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty.
in adult education program. So is Dr. Kerr here?
Yes.
Yeah, come on up here, Dr. Kerr. Up here, this way. Actually, why don't you come up here? This will help us introduce the candidates as they come up here and give us a little perspective. B-Pace, which is an extremely awesome school. Okay, let's get Dr. Kerr a great hand, you guys. Go ahead, talk to us about the.
Yeah, this is in recognition of Adult Ed Week, and every year, and I think Denise Simon was saying, we've probably done this for the last twenty-three years, we have an essay contest where students from the adult schools share what adult education means to them, and this year was, the essays were really incredible. They highlighted the changes adult ed has made in these students' life, and also some of the support services we offer at the school, how important they are, like babysitting and financial aid. But the remarkable thing is, and I'll just digress a little, this community has kept adult ed alive. And there are, I go to a lot of meetings throughout the state, and they ask, how can we still have an older adult program? Nobody does. And that's because we have this incredible support in this community. So we have the city council on our side, we have the school board on our side, but our community really makes a difference. So we were able to offer things like babysitting, fitness classes for older adults, we still have sewing programs, those have been dropped everywhere, you know, and of course, we do job training and E S L and everything else. But we're kind of looked at as something remarkable, so I get to go to these meetings and I take all the credit, of course. But this community is really remarkable, and I think the essays this year really pointed that out.
Okay, the first one is Viehang. The person, please come up here. Viehang, come on up here. Congratulations. Thank you. Chris Bella Espinosa, stand, stand right here. Congratulations. Do without my glasses. Okay, Ginger Garcia. Salome, Salazar. You know what, we could go down there. Is this for her? Yeah, we'll go down there. I'll go down there.
Why don't we take the presentation?
Yes, yes, good.
Why don't we take the presentation?
Yes, yes, we will. And Otilia Diaz. Okay, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and we'll go right down there, so we'll get a photo over here.
Contest. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you very much.
Do you have a certificate out there? Do you have a certificate there?
Not bad, is it?
Very sorry. I didn't have it.
On the camera, let's see.
On the camera, let's see.
Okay, I'll make sure to take it to her so you can get your certificate. Okay, I'm so sorry that we didn't print it. Get it to you. Thank you.
The lady's part of the Donate for Life, she didn't hear the announcement. She's like in a walker or something. She wasn't expecting me. You can go in. Maybe the problem is, like, she didn't listen to the instructions.
The mayor went over there.
The mayor went over there. I said, oh, the mayor, no, I'm going. Oh, there.
Did she tell you her name?
Oh, no, I should, I should, I should have gotten her name.
How are you?
I'm sure not as busy.
Really? Sounds awesome.
Yes, she's going, she wants her picture. We'll have to mail the proclamation that she wants her picture taken. She's one of them. I have an appeal from a [inaudible].
What is your name? What is your name?
My name?
Okay, real quick, one I just, we have Lupe Reyes. We're going to present her with a proclamation from the D M V Donate Life California Month. Come on up here. And I'll just read this, it reads, organ tissues, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expression of compassion to those in need. More than a hundred twenty-one thousand individuals nationwide, and more than twenty-one thousand in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and every ninety minutes, one person dies while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. The need of donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanics and African-American communities. At any given time, six thousand patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors. A single individual's donation of the heart, lung, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestines can save up to eight lives. Donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of up to fifty others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need. Millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors. Over ten million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ and tissue donors are honored. California residents can sign up with the Donate for, Donate Life California Registry when applying for a renewing their driver's license or I D card at California Department of Motor Vehicles. So I want to thank you first of all, and I know you're an ambassador, so you want to share some words about the program. Come on, come on.
Well, I was here for a different reason, but I happen to be an ambassador for Donate Life. It's very close to me. My, when my husband passed away, he donated his organs, which helped save the life of another father, to be there with his children. It's very important to remember, when we pass away, there's other people that can be helped. You can even be a living donor. You know, you can be a living donor with your organs, you can, you have two kidneys, you can do that. Skin, I believe, as well. There's all kinds of ways you can donate. Blood, blood is very important to help people as well. So anything that you can do to help, or to at least consider it. We know some family members may not be very happy with it, while other people are. When you put that pink dot on your license and say yes, it is legally binding, so your decision will be followed. Your family will be helped hand in hand. That's what they did with me. They held my hand through the whole process, were there with me at the hospital every day while my husband was on life support, and they didn't forget us after. There's family support groups that they provide to us for free, grief support, yearly support, any kind of support you want, including external support if that is not enough to help you with your grieving process. So again, this is very important. Anybody who wishes to sign up, just go through D M V, you don't even have to. If your license doesn't have it now and you wish to, you go to the Donate Life website, Donate Life California, and you can sign up there and be an organ donor there, and you can even specify what you wish to donate, if you wish to limit it, or if you wish to make it unlimited. Thank you so very much for considering this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. We'll get a picture with you in the proclamation. Where's Carrillo?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Reyes, what's your first name?
[inaudible].
Well, I can contact her and get it to her.
Take it, just do that.
Okay. I'll go ahead and contact Michelle.
Thank you. It goes into that little slot there.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, Wadalupe Reyes.
Thank you for being here.
All righty, so do we have another, actually, one?
Thank you very much. Thank you, all right.
All right, thank you. And that ends the presentation part. So at this point, with the group up here, were you scheduled for, Dr. Adam?
Scheduled for.
Were they scheduled for the presentation? No. I thought additional, okay, I want to make sure we didn't miss anyone. All right, so at this point, I'd like to open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, you have approximately three minutes. Good evening.
Okay, it's on. Members of the public and members, honorable members of the city council, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lauren Shi, and I am the field, one of the field representatives for Supervisor Hilda Solis, and with me today are representatives of Su Chi, the Buddhist charity, Win Lee, Stephanie, and Ingrid. And we're here before you today to present a health fair that is coming up on the twenty-fourth of this month. This is a collaboration between the city of Baldwin Park, with much thanks to Mr. Manny Carrillo, and Su Chi, the Buddhist charity, and the Office of Supervisor Hilda Solis. This health fair will occur on Sunday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen, from nine A M. to three P M. This health fair will occur on Sunday, April 24th, 2016, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Baldwin Park Community Center, located on 4100 Baldwin Park Boulevard. We have flyers here for, enough for the public, and we also have flyers for the City Council if you would like some. And of course, we humbly invite the City Council out on that day. The kickoff will begin at 9:30 a.m. with time for comment and presentations. And now I will yield my time to my colleagues here, so they can describe what services we have at this wonderful health fair.
All righty, thank you. Hello.
Hello. My name is Wendy. I'm a volunteer of Buddhist Tijia Foundation, and thank you for having us to tell you a little bit about our organization, as well as our outreach on the April 24th. Buddhist Tijia Foundation is a nonprofit, non-government foundation. It was founded by Dharma Master Ching Yen in 1966 in Taiwan. But so far, we have already established our different offices globally, about in 70 countries. And we have serviced many, many different disasters in over 80 to 100 countries globally. And in the United States, our headquarters is in San Dimas, which is not far from here. And we have about 80 offices across the nation. And one of the four missions that is very important to us is medical. That's why we're offering this free medical outreach to many, to many people in the United States. And this is the first collaboration with the City of Baldwin Park, and thanks to many for offering the space to us. And we would like to invite all the members of the City Council to join us on the 24th, and so we can, we can share with you what we do to help with the many residents in the community. On the 24th, we're gonna offer free dental, free vision, and free acupuncture services. You're welcome to join us and give you a little bit of experience. And we have, we will bring two mobile vans, complete with dental service and complete with vision services. And we also collaborate with many schools of the community to offer help, like dental assistance or vision assistance students. So we work together with the community, with feel, it's very important. Other than the many services that we already have internationally and also nationally, we're very, we also, one of the very few organizations is able to go to the ground zero when 9/11 happened. We also distributed a lot of cash cards in Katrina, as well as Sandy Kerriken in New York. So we have many, many disasters...
Sorry, time's up.
...relief effort, and we would like to work with the local community. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Looking forward to meeting with you as well.
Can we share our flyer with you later?
Yes, absolutely. Go ahead and give it right here to our city treasurer. While they just pass them out?
And I know that you are limited in time, but if somebody else wants to say something, they can. They're limited in time, it's three minutes per person, so if somebody else wants to continue to, to share a little bit more, you can.
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Wanted to let you know that we have a ten, very experienced dentist...
Oh, wow.
...and two optometrists, and five acupuncture doctors. And we are planning to take about 100 patients for the dental treatment. We will do the filling, extraction, and cleanings. And about like 40 to 50 patients for the, to check, the vision check. And then we also do dispense the glasses, too. So, and then we are planning to take about 70 to 80 patients for acupuncture, but it will be kind of like a first come, first served.
Sure.
So I hope that everybody can take this opportunity. And then also, it's my pleasure to take this opportunity to, thanks to City of Baldwin Park, to provide this space for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Looking forward. Well, we also do during the summer, once our concerts start, we have about 2,000 people that gather, they will have you speaking there to the crowd. Okay? Thank you very much. All right, moving along with public communication.
John Reyes, citizen. I have some for the mayor, and for Pacheco, and for Garcia. Three subpoenas for you guys. I'm gonna give it to the city clerk.
The attorney will take it. The attorney will accept it.
Mr. Reyes, I'll take that, but when you serve those subpoenas, you do have to have witness fees. Do you have the witness fee check? Okay.
You do? You do? All right, moving along with public communication. Anyone else wishing to speak? Need to come up here? Okay. Are the witness, is the witness fee there or not? Okay, he's gotta get him back. You're gonna have to get him back to him. All right, I don't wanna hold up, but anyone else wishing to speak on a public communication? Let's continue on. Thank you. I don't think he knows what that is.
Good evening.
Yeah, good evening, ma'am.
My name is Rosefa. I live on Stewart Avenue. I don't know if this is a venue. I have to express my concern, or, but I have gone to the police department, I've gone to the animal control department, I'm not getting any answer.
Okay.
In any given day, around Stewart Avenue, you see people walking their dogs, and they left their pool. There's no pool per school per law, I was told. It's not illegal not to pick up after your dog. There's no fine, there's no, it's just something we can do, because it's getting, it's supposed to keep Baldwin Park beautiful. These people, absolutely, they don't care. I've confronted them, I picked up their pool, I brought them to their house, and they continue to do it. So if it's something that they can make that into an ordinance with a fine attached to it, maybe that would solve the problem. Because it's any given day, there's like three or four people walk by and just lift their dog at the pool.
Yeah, you know what? Let's get your number and address, and then, once it finishes, then I'll address it as well.
Okay, good.
Because it definitely is a big concern for a lot of residents.
Yeah, and not just our street. Any, just look around Baldwin Park, there's a lot of dogs running around loose.
Okay.
No.
Definitely, we definitely, once this finishes, the speakers, then I'll address yours.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving along with public communication.
Good evening, Ken Woods. I'm a resident and business owner here in Baldwin Park. So, my grandson's girlfriend has a VW. It's in need of some engine work. And I wanted to spend our money in Baldwin Park, so I figured I would take it to Tuttle's Pars Exchange. And he's been a hero many years, I figured that'd be a good place. But I now have my doubts, because of the way you three councilpeople have portrayed Tuttle as a cheat, a liar, and most recently, as a stalker. Councilman Pacheco, do any of your cronies do this kind of work? I'd like to, you know, maybe you can get a little kickback, not kickback, a little contribution to your political fund. Also, I have Councilwoman Garcia, a statement to the Superior Court. This was for a restraining order against Greg Tuttle. I would read it, but it's just ridiculous. In reading this statement, I did find out one thing, something I didn't know, that the blog and the, and the topics are actually gospel truth. I didn't know that. If you guys try to have our city pay for these frivolous lawsuits that you're being involved in, you'll probably need more restraining orders. Thank you.
Okay, moving along with public communication. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I would like to express my concern regarding this council's wasteful spending. This year's budget is on track to leave the city with $5,000 after costs. This means the city is keeping no more than 0.02% of the incoming revenue. Somehow, some of you can claim these are quality numbers. I, and I am sure anyone with a background in business would disagree. It is time the council stopped wasting money trying to silence residents and strip them of the right to speak up. It is time for money to stop being misspent on lawsuits that citizens do not approve of. Robert Sefoya claimed, "The lawsuits were settled with Cook due to high costs to complete, yet somehow, the city is able to countersue and simultaneously sue two others. These acts not only define squandering, but are also oppressive. It's time for taxpayer dollars to be put to work and not given away to outside firms. We are in dire need to learn self-control and stop impulse shopping and approving long-term contracts that hold no guarantee to benefit the city. City representatives should not have to waste $50,000 trying to figure out why consumers aren't spending money here. If you need an outside source to tell you about your city, you are clearly not involved. The downtown area is not well lit, it's not appealing, and many of our local plazas need to be renovated. But instead of looking at the obvious problems, we choose to look away and make path for corporations we do not need. I do not agree that we need retailers and big chain stores in our city. Our city is small and not apt for that. Instead, I ask you to stop wasting and start investing. Light up our downtown area so that people might want to stay out a little later, hence attracting foot traffic. Create incentives for plaza owners to wanna renovate so that our plaza makers want to shop locally. And so I ask you to make better decisions. I ask you to stop wasteful spending and approving contracts on impulse. Let's not waste, let us invest. Invest in the people of Baldwin Park and our local businesses. Instead of trying to silence residents, answer our concerns. I ask that the council have considered the risk of using our schools as green space? Instead of detailed answers, I received a counterargument that taxpayers have the right to use the fields because they pay the costs. I and many other residents do not find this idea viable. The mayor, one of the main supporters of this idea, did not bother to defend his views. Yes, I understand that the school district will have the final say, but as initiators, you should be ready to defend the ideas you support. Questions with high concern have also been dodged. Those questions include the failure of CEO Shannon to release public records after being ordered three times by the court, and how some of our councilmembers managed to obtain thousands of dollars from a corporation that wasn't welcomed in our city, and the coincidental approval for three of their projects. I ask you not just to invest in our people, I ask you to stop taking advantage of the lack of knowledge the average resident holds regarding budgets, contracts, and revenue. I ask you to instead do what you were elected to do, negotiate on behalf of the people. Let's not waste, let us invest. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving along with public communication. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Thomas Carey, I've been on a loop for a while.
Yeah, hadn't seen you in a while. Thomas, welcome back.
Oh, thank you. There's been a lot of things happen over here, I guess, lately, with the litigation and that. If there's an election problem where the same people are elected, that is the people who live here's problem. They keep electing the same people, and they wonder why things don't change, or why there continues to be litigation. I guess the only other viable way is to put it on the ballot and try and put term limits to at least limit the amount of time people can stay in office. Other than that, it's just, the litigation's gonna continue. You know, Paul Cook is, I guess he won a case or something, I'm unaware, but it's gotta stop. It's these people's money. I don't live here anymore. And I don't know if I'm so, not so sure I wanna come back, so, anyway, I didn't wanna get into anything too heavy. I'm not, you know, not kind of tired, don't feel good today, but all this, this litigation. The last, I think the last time I was here was probably three months ago, or three or four months ago, I mentioned about all the litigation that was going on then. The only ones that benefits are the attorneys. They're the only ones that benefit from litigation. So, the people and the taxpayers, the utility taxes and things, or whatever, are gonna go up to cover all these things. Needs to stop. As for the campaign contributions, well, there should be things in place to make you abstain from voting when you get campaign contributions from companies that are doing business with the city, but it doesn't seem to be the case. Of course, this isn't the only place that does that. LA is good for that. AEG over there, and all those other big ones. There's no end. The corporate greed has got control of everything. They're allowing them to merge left and right, and low-the-ow companies. Oil prices are $38 a barrel, but we're still paying nearly $3 a gallon. So, it's the greed, and that'll be what undo, that's what'll destroy this country. The greed and the corruption will destroy this country just as surely as it destroyed Rome. That's what did that. Rome was destroyed by greed and corruption. The only difference is it'll be litigation. That's what's gonna undo this country, all this racism crap that the news media is pumping out there, and all this stuff fanning the flames of negativity over and over and over. It's gonna be the end. Probably won't live long enough to see the country fall, but it's going to if it continues at the present rate of decline. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Thomas. Nice seeing you. Okay, moving along. Good evening. How you doing, Joanne?
Hi. Joanne Watkins resident. I just wanna thank you for allowing me to be on the recreational and community commissioner. I have enjoyed doing it, and I know that you're reconsidering all of us, but I would like to be reconsidered. I did put my application in, and I love representing Baldwin Park. It is the greatest city in the world. I have been here for 63 years and plan to be here till the day I die. And again, I think you guys are doing an awesome job, and I really appreciate each and every one of you. Manny, you're the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, moving along with public communication.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. I'm the one that got the restraining order reserved on me by Ricardo Pacheco, Manny Lazzano, and Monica. Before I run out of time, I have to give, read the, here, I have the transcript from the, from our hearing, because Manny, you couldn't make it, you were too busy doing whatever. But what the court said, all right, substantial emotional distress, the plaintiff, Garcia, may be very distressed, but a reasonable person under the same circumstances would not necessarily be substantially emotionally distressed. You know what he's calling her? She's not reasonable. She's not normal. We've been saying that all these years. And the conduct serves a legitimate purpose for me to be there. I have every right to be at any of your conferences, I have every right to be at any meeting, and you can't control the world. This is not your world, people. This is our world. You were elected. Some people elected you only because they didn't know what, how evil you can be, and what things and methods that you use to shut people up that wanna talk out and tell the truth about you. And it's just like with Mayor Lazzano tonight. He passes a thing so that he can get his court fees paid for because an appeals has been filed on him personally, but he's gonna use city money, just like they use city money to file a lawsuit on me on a restraining thing. That by the time we're all done, because we go in on May 11th, and you people will be subpoenaed, you'll get your subpoenas, we'll just have a marshal do it and do it the right way for you people, so you understand. And you're going to go to court, and you're gonna hear how much it's gonna cost to pay my attorney fees and court costs, because you people did a frivolous lawsuit. And then the lawsuits start coming in with frivolous lawsuits, and we just keep on going down the list. Now, the attorney that you hired, just recently, 2010, had a DUI. And you wanna know who did his DUI for him? Felipe Pascencia. You remember his name, Manny? He gave you his house at half price. He's a big contributor to you. He's also with the Mexican Federal, I think it's Mexican League Association with the Attorney Bar. All these people all joined together, so it seems to be one big clique. And then the DUI gets moved to West Covina, gets down to a misdemeanor on the thing. So when we get into all these buddy deals, we find out that you guys hand out all these things and lawsuits to your buddies, and then the city, the residents, and the business owners pay for this stuff, because you people don't know how to stay out of trouble. We can talk the police lawsuit that cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars from Marlin being revengeful with two different officers. We can talk, we can go through numerous lawsuits that this city's been into that never needed to be into, but it's the arrogance of, from Pacheco, you ma- You Manny and Garcia don't understand the rules.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving along with public communication, anyone else wishing to speak? If now, I now declare the public communication closed. Yo, it's funny because I'll repeat myself over and over, just so that everyone knows this person that just spoke. He is, and I labeled him a congenital liar. I mean, this person has been a liar since birth. Stop interrupting. So, 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 and again, this is what he does. He's not a resident of the city Baldwin Park. He ran for mayor of the city Baldwin Park, of course, not knowing any of the actual ordinances, let alone laws. He decides to run. He perjured himself, said he lived in Baldwin Park. No evidence whatsoever that this person lived in Baldwin Park. Now, I as the mayor could have taken action and taken him to the district attorney's office for fraud. And this is what this individual is good at. He's an expert at outright lying. And the reason why he does that, just to let everyone know here. The United States Constitution, the First Amendment allows anyone here to accuse me or any other council members of anything. And the law protects himself. And this person right here, who learned about that just recently, is an expert at that particular area. So whether you live here in Baldwin Park or another city, you could go to your mayor's, you could go to senator, and even the President of the United States, and accuse he or she of anything you want, and the law protects you 100%. Now, he is a lobbyist for two of the council members that are here and a campaign manager. He's upset for one because we got reelected. And he cannot vote in the city of Baldwin Park. And this person, you know, is a troubled individual. More so than he doesn't know of the information that was mailed to all of us. I don't know if most of you already got that particular information on this particular individual. He's anti-woman. Literally attacks council member, the vice mayor of the city Baldwin Park, which is wrong. The other women on this council should all be united to us in making certain that these frivolous, that these particular types of attacks stop. Now, yes, he has a right. We were at a conference in the city of Santa Barbara and this individual shows up at the restaurant that there, that both of the council members were at. The next day, shows up at the same hotel spying on council, on the vice mayor of the city Baldwin Park. That is totally wrong and unacceptable. But he's given that leeway. And yes, have we used the criminal justice to attempt to address this evil individual's behavior? Absolutely. Now, tonight, just so that he knows that there was a 5-0. No one objected to go on and pursue this with our attorney. You may think certain individuals up here are backing you up, but I think what's happening, they're seeing your behavior. Now, what he does, he is allowed, but this individual is a person who needs to deal, one, with anger, two, look at some type of counseling. I mean, yes, he comes from all the way, I believe, in Pomona somewhere else. And he has time to come here and falsify information because he's an expert at that particular area. And again, the Constitution of the United States allows him the right to come up here and outright lie. And again, yes, he is a congenital liar. And that I will stand on and will not retract that. So I just want to let everyone know, so at least you're informed as to what's transpiring. Now, there is something that, that was sent to me about his divorce and about domestic violence against his wife and against his daughter. Now, I received that, and we're gonna make, excuse me, excuse me. And that information needs to be shared so that, again, what he's doing to the vice mayor of the city Baldwin Park is unacceptable. And yes, I know what happened to court. I guess we'll have to wait until he literally harms one of us. And that's just the fact of the way the system works. So I just want to clarify that.
I'm sorry.
Hold on, Councilman Cruz Baca did that.
I was first. I, I think that, first of all, everyone has read everything that was in the newspapers, whether it's true or not. And I think we're wasting a lot of the people's time. We've got people here waiting to see if their contracts are going to be approved, mayor. I believe that our judicial system is set up in a way that the judicial system was the one that denied your TRO, your temporary restraining order. I think that we need to take a look at that regardless if we agree or not. And instead of going on and on and on and on, I think we need to move on with the program and the agenda here. And let's put this aside as adults. And let's listen to what the people have to say with the, with the long agenda that we have today.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think, the council member. I just want to add that, you know, Cruz, it's unfortunate that this is your campaign manager. This is all a part of your campaign.
It is.
You and the individuals that you ran, and you continuously, because you lost the election, continue to come here and badger the city council. I think you're a part of the corruption that is occurring and it's unfortunate. And the other things that you did to me and wrote about me is wrong. And so this is just, you know, dirty politics on your behalf. Yes, I would love to move on and continue on with what the, what the city is doing. But you and your cohorts here continuously, you guys put, you and Paul Cook write, do frivolous lawsuits against the city, which we haven't even discussed yet. And you continuously put in the city with these lawsuits that are just ridiculous, costing the city thousands of dollars that is just unheard of. Cruz, I've never seen somebody operate at the level that you do and the corruption that you have. I think it's just outright wrong. Yes, the TRO, the first judge issued it, he recognized this individual and the capacity of, of the kind of person that he is. And the second judge, another judge looked at it, didn't agree. You know, TROs are hard to get. Some of the judges will support it and some may have a different opinion. I don't know, I may, may appeal it and go back and ask the judges to look at it again. You know, in light of some information that I got about Mr. Tuttle and the domestic violence that he has in the past, I think if you look at that and put everything together, there's an escalation of the kind of behavior that he has and demonstrates here at every council meeting. I just think it's unheard of for someone to, to travel all the way from Baldwin Park to, to, you know, another restaurant and then a conference meeting and try to be intimidating. I just think that's unheard of and it's wrong. But nonetheless, the next judge, right, the judge did not agree. Maybe another judge will agree at a later point. But having said that, you're right, let's put it behind us. I said what I had to say and let's move on.
Yes, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.
Thank you, and I want to thank you both for your comments. And it's really unfortunate that it takes the two men on this council to stand up for what is right. And what is right here is that there is somebody who has constantly attacked me, who has been very degrading, who has used sexual references here in the city council meeting and in this dais against me. And not one of the women on this council have stood against that person to, you know, you promote that you want to see peace in this chamber and you promote that you want to see some respect. But I'm surprised that you haven't stood to tell your friend and your ally and your campaign manager that what he does is not right. And it's true that a judge may have dismissed the temporary restraining order because we are public officials. And as public officials, we have a higher standard, a higher threshold, that, a different criteria that need to be met in order for a TRO to be granted. Physical harm would be one of those. And, you know, that's, that's a concern. And I ask any of you here in this audience how you would feel if your daughter, if your sister, your mother was being treated like that in public? And then also, you know, some of the, some of the activities, let me share some of the behaviors. As was stated here earlier, I attended a conference in Santa Barbara, and that's public. And you're welcome to attend conferences related to city council. But I was at a private dinner and this individual shows up. And that's not a public place. That's not a public hearing. I go to the hotel where we're having our conference and clearly this individual is there. He comes back home and talks and posts on the blog, although he says it's not him. But who else was at the conference? And he talks about what I was doing in my bedroom. Again, sexual references. If I could get into the mind of that person that's posting on those blogs, it would be filth, disgust, perversion. And I don't think any one of you would want your family member subjected to, to that type of activity. So I, I just ask that you look at, you know, what's happening here. And yes, a judge dismissed my request for TRO. But that doesn't make it right. And yes, this person may have a legitimate purpose of being a community activist and trying to uncover whatever he believes to be, you know, as corruption or whatever, you know, he wants to make his makeup in his mind. But to what extent? And, and, and as was pointed out here, I mean, if he has a history of what, what we've been told of domestic violence, then, you know, that's, that's a concern. And I would, seriously, I would ask that the, the women here on the city, the city council take a position against that and, and share with your friends that, you know what, there are boundaries. And I think that if anybody's going to make that, take that position and share that message, it's going to be Cruz Baca and Susan Ruby, who have worked very closely with Greg Tuttle all these years. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Hey, I need to speak real quickly. You know, this just, this saddens me because you can't turn around and accuse guests that come and speak up here of lying. When you turn around and do the same. Let me just tell you, I've been sitting on this dais for 10 years. Cruz Baca got elected two years ago. I remember from Mr. Tuttle and some of the residents back there coming, 10 years. 10 years in a row expressing their concerns, you know, bashing all of us at, you know, I got bashed at times, they did. It's been 10 years that Mr. Tuttle's been coming down here. And for now, for them to turn around and say it's Cruz's campaign manager and my manager. We are obligated to report who our campaign managers are, who we page on our campaigns. I invite all of you to check our, our forums. If that's the case, they should be paid and they should be on record. I've never hired Mr. Tuttle. I've never had him run any campaigns. He's not a personal friend of mine. What I haven't done is in the 10 years of sitting up here is ever responded to him. Because, and the fact is, I've never responded to anybody when they come and talk up here because I just feel that's public comments and that's the right. And I cannot argue with what they come and say. Do I disagree with it? A lot of it I do. But again, we're up here to listen and I just choose not to engage back and forth. And I think that's the difference. Another thing that bothers me is that you're saying that the women up here should be defending you. I think people like the words will remember that I stood here and constantly was attacked by her, probably like six years in a row. And council member Ricardo Pacheco pointed that out many, many times, how his constant attack up on the dais. I just choose not to engage in those kind of conversations. It's just not good for our council. And really, my position is I just stay quiet because that's the right to speak. Do I address issues separately? Yes. Mr. Tuttle knows. I've called him a few times aside and expressed my, my opposition to certain things that he says. I just feel up here on the dais, it's not our place because unfortunately, like they just pointed out, whether they yell at us, insult us, I mean, they just, freedom of speech protects them. And I have chosen to separately call them up and express my concerns and my disagreements. I just choose not to do it up here. But to say that he's our campaign manager, that he's our friend, all of that is a lie. And I really would like for you to take that back. Again, we are obligated to report who our campaign managers are, who we pay. And my, the record will show he has never been on my payroll, ever. And he's not a friend of mine. He's a person that I know and at the very least he'll tell you that I've respected and I chose him not to engage in fights with, but he's not a friend of mine. He is a person that I respect as a community member. Do I respect what he says a lot of times? No. But I respect him like any of you, whether you agree with me or disagree. I have to respect the process and what I put up here. And that is to, to listen and try to navigate some of this, you know, disagreement between the, the public and ourselves. But I, again, I've chosen to stay quiet because that's not my place to be up here fighting back and forth. And to answer your question, Monica, I have called him on a lot of issues. I just haven't done it publicly. I've expressed my concerns time and time again privately and he knows it. I just don't choose to fight up here with any of our residents. That is the right. Thank you, mayor.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so this point. This point, I'm going to go ahead and go on to, yes.
I would just, I would just ask that, again, you know, that if, if there are concerns with this person's behavior, that you express it publicly because these comments and these behaviors are being shared publicly. And as far as any attacks that I made against you, I, I think that that's ridiculous. If you could share one, I would really appreciate that, but I.
Absolutely. So it was back because Marlon Garcia and her were expressing the fact that I wasn't responsible, that I didn't know what responsibility was. They said because I didn't have children. I didn't know what responsibility was. At that point, I expressed my outrage because I said Hilda Solis doesn't have children. Judy Chu doesn't have children. It doesn't make them less leaders, less capable, less responsible, and less responsive to their community. That was one issue that I really did take offense to and I publicly spoke against it, but I, most of the time chose to stay quiet. Attacks come and go and we know the, you know, the political, just arena, that's just the nature. But I've chosen so many times to stay quiet. Doesn't mean I didn't take offense to many things that were said. But that in particular, I did stand up and I was very, just discuss it, the process because I remember I said at the time, you wouldn't be saying that about a man because a man doesn't have children. You wouldn't be questioning their leadership skills or their qualifications. So that's one particular instance. Thank you.
I can point out, I don't have children either and I would never make that comment. So I don't know where you're making these things up from, but the bottom line is that, again, I would ask both of you being women on this dais.
Stop interrupting, please. I'm going to have to ask that you leave. Stop.
But you share your concerns. If you, if you truly have concerns, that you would share them publicly and that you would encourage, you know, that boundaries be set here as far as that, the interactions that have been occurring. Thank you.
I think, mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I think that, and I have asked, including council member Pacheco, that we need to respect each other. I feel that there have been a lot of allegations. There has been a lot of bullying and there has been a lot of, in, in, in some instances, to the point of harassment. I had to write a letter and present it to the chief on behalf of what council member Pacheco had been doing. And Monica, you yourself attacked me on two different occasions. You attacked me at a special meeting upstairs and you told me that I, you accused me of being a liar, that I'd let other people do my dirty work, and you went off on me. That was the time. And the second time, when I was back here the day of the swearing in and I was just singing with the mariachis and you tried to pull me off the dais. You even pulled my arm in order to get me off the dais. Those are the things. I want this to stop, please. This is getting to the point of being personal, not doing the job that we're supposed to be doing, representing the community. We need to represent the community. And we are not doing that because we've already spent 45 minutes discussing this and us hearing that you're calling us names. Enough already.
Let's move on.
She's playing it.
This isn't about calling names.
Don't play the victim, Cruz. Don't play the victim. But you know what? Let's take this offline and let's discuss it offline. I'm, I'm done, okay? All right, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, and let me just, for the record, just for the record, I mean, okay. The day that you got up to sing, we had paid for a mariachi. And I was asking you very politely, and there were, there were, there were hundreds of people in this chamber who saw. I asked you politely if you could sit down because we had paid for this mariachi to sing to us. I'm sorry, Cruz, but we didn't pay you to sing to us. There's a difference.
You don't have to pay me and you couldn't afford me anyway.
There is a difference. And so for you to say that, hold your arm and all this other stuff, it, it is true. It is true. You know, there's, you're playing the victim. And I think we all need to be, we all need to be responsible for, you know, our behavior. But what I'm asking again is that there's behaviors as far as attacks being made on the women up here. And I'm asking you as women to stand against those attacks. And I don't think that that's completely unreasonable to ask.
Then you need to ask it of your fellow council member Ricardo Pacheco and as well as the mayor because they've taken their jabs at me. They've taken their jabs at me.
Okay, let's move on because she's. He's not going to apologize and it's a victim.
Let's just move on.
Her campaign manager. Okay, at this point, let's go ahead and move on. I'm going to go ahead and move on to the public. Excuse me, excuse me, stop. You guys, stop, stop, or do me a favor, stop. Okay, do me a favor, remove him, remove him from the council. Remove from the council. Stop, I'm going to have you removed. Stop, or I'm going to have you removed. Okay, you want, you know, do me a favor. I want, I want him escorted out. Okay. At this point, I'm asking, please ask this individual to leave. He's being disruptive. And again, he's part of the campaign, so I'm going to ask, ask you to leave, please. Step outside. Okay, go step outside. Okay, excuse me, stop. Do, do me a big favor, please escort him out. I've asked to please escort him out. Captain, Captain Purnell, please. Thank you. I'm not going to have someone being disruptive here. Okay, not going to have him disrupt this meeting. This person also ran and he lost. And his, and you're, you're refusing to accept you lost. You lost. You lost. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you lost.
Questions?
Okay. All right. Again, you lost, and I'm sorry. The residents did not want you up here. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Okay.
Do you wanna mention what's that?
What's that? Yeah, I mean, this is part of the campaign stuff. It's the whole group, and it's part of the campaign. All right, so at this point, um, let's go ahead and go into consent calendar. We have items, uh, we have items, uh, one through, uh, 10. Councilmember, would you just pull any items?
Yes, I would like to pull, um, nine and 10.
Okay, nine and 10. All righty, so at this point, um, if, see no further, I will now go ahead and move for consent.
Approval, approval for everything but nine?
Okay, nine and 10. All right. I'll second. Any objections? See none, so move. All right, item number nine, which is a fiscal 2016-2017 Business Improvement Tax Allocation Committee Recommendation. This one, Councilmember Cruz Baca.
It's a business improvement tax allocation, not implementation. For the record.
Oh, okay, I see. So we could correct that part, please? That's the only thing that you had?
No, no.
Okay, go ahead.
No, 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 you said implementation, but it's improvement, business improvement tax.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I know it's being recorded, so sometimes if they're gonna transcribe it, it's, they're confused.
Thank you.
Um, could I please have an explanation on that? I just need a clarification on the business improvement tax. Is that you, uh, Ms. Tam? The business improvement, or is it you, Shannon?
Well, I can give you a little bit of summary on this. Um, this is a business, um, improvement tax. It's added on to each, um, uh, business license. Um, it's been used in the past to fund, um, different programs that support the community. Um, the guidelines are pretty vague, and, um, all of these items do meet the requirements. Um, previously, when there was a Chamber of Commerce, uh, this funding was used to fund the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, the committee met and looked at a number of items and made these recommendations, um, for funding out of this fund for the next fiscal year.
Uh, I have another question. On the Certified Farmers Market, um, Fair, uh, the additional entertainment is $15,000. I thought that they were gonna, I thought that they were coming in and they were taking care of everything.
Yes, Councilmember, they are going to take care of everything. That's just an allocation, just in case if, uh, they need to be supplemented. They say they're going to provide entertainment, but I'm just not 100% sure if it's the quality of entertainment that we've been accustomed to in the past. So maybe, possibly, if we wanted to hire like a band, Soto, uh, that is out of their price range, that we could assist them in supplementing it. The $15,000 would be there just in case. And in talking to the operators, they assure me that they're going to be able to provide quality enter, entertainment.
Okay. Um, the other item was the Media Outreach Program. Could you please explain that to me? It's at $23,399.
Um, yes, that was actually an item that the city council approved, um, in a previous year. Um, that's paying a consultant to do, um, nudist articles and stories that they're put out to, um, the press and to the website and in the now. Um, there's actually funding that's still available for that program, so we, not asking for any additional funding this year for that, um, already existing program.
Do, do we have copies of any of the articles and so forth that have been written? I don't think I've ever seen anything.
Sure, I can get you those.
That's what's been in the newspaper and so forth.
Yes, I can, I can get you those. I believe we posted all of them on the website, and I can get you the articles or the links.
Okay, no, no, I'll go on the website.
All of the press releases are posted on the website.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Pacheco, yes, sir.
To the, to the manager question, so, but these are not to exceed values. I mean, you don't pay somebody, the, the actual amount of budgeted, you just, as they do the work, then you pay them.
That's correct. These are budgeted amounts, um, we would strive not to go over, and if we can keep the amounts under the budgeted amounts, then we'll have some savings to return to the fund at the end of the year.
I have a question on that as well. Um, well, first of all, can you clarify who was on the committee that made the decisions on all these items?
Um, yes, and that was, um, that was approved by the city council at a previous meeting. It was myself, the police chief, uh, the public works director, the finance director, and the parks, recreation, community services director.
Okay, my second question, thank you for that, is, so who has discretion over these funds? Just to give you an example, so, uh, we're talking about the, um, the media outreach. There's 23,000, almost 24,000. So who has discretion and who decides how we spend those funds?
Well, the city council authorized that program, um, and authorized that funding. Um, and so, um, basically, there's a contract with that person, and, um, there's a lump sum that is paid for each of the press releases that is done. Um, again, that money was approved in a previous budget, um, and if this year, you'll see the middle column are the numbers that we're asking for this year, and we're not asking for any additional funding for that program this year.
No, I remember that we did approve it, but I also remember at the beginning, there was a lot of stories that were, I think we're doing so many positive things and they were not being reported, because I remember I asked a few times. So I guess I'm saying, if we have that, who's gonna stay on top to make sure that these great stories, you know, whether it be the street fair or any new thing that we're doing, gets printed? You know, I was disappointed a few times when the street fair last year, it wasn't reported. We had so many great events, which is supposed to boost the image of Baldwin Park, and, and I didn't see any of those articles as well. So I'm not necessarily questioning the money or how it's spent. I want it to be spent, but I want it to be beneficial. We really definitely wanna put out our stories. We want it to be beneficial. So I guess I'm saying, I want someone to be on top of, of making sure this person does. Is there at every event, for example, the, the Easter event, uh, the street markets, whatever it is, but I even think the, the July spectacular we had, if I remember correctly, I didn't see anything on that. And again, I don't mind the money, I just once wanna stay on top to make sure that they're there, they know what events to cover. And press, if they're not covering the stories that makes us look good, which is the intent, right? We wanna make sure our residents, our community know that Baldwin Park is spectacular and we're taking care of business. But these stories are important to our image. For years and years, we've been looked at as the city that has no energy and nothing's happening. These are the moments we need to take advantage of, make sure that they're being put out there. So I just wanna make sure someone is there to push this individual to cover those important stories.
Mm-hmm. Especially like tomorrow, the street fair. That's a big deal. It's the beginning of the street fair. There should be photos, there should be, um, I, I see a lot of even the, um, that little newspaper from West Covina, Glendora, or whatever, Examiner. And even they cover, and I look at some of the pictures and I say, what happened to us? Are we like stepchildren? So, you know, I think it's just pushing and making sure that somebody sends a photo and sends a little bit of, just a caption, so that that way they can print it as well. And of course, uh, you know, the Tribune and, and some of the local newspapers, and I know it's on the website, but a lot of people don't really have access to the website. So, um, thank you for following up on that and making sure that, um, and making sure that it's on top, we're on top of that.
Um, I also wanna speak clarif, or hear clarification on the economic downtown services. Can you outline specifically what those services will be?
Um, yes, that is funding that could be used, um, actually for, um, either of the reports that are before you tonight, um, or any other economic, um, studies that would come down within the next year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Oh, go ahead. Yes, okay, move for approval. Second?
Second.
Second, any objections? See none, so move. At this point, uh, item number 10, which is consider approval, approve the supplemental services agreement with High Color Printing and Mail and Ink. Uh, this is Councilmember Cruz Baca.
Uh, again, I would like clarification, please. That's you, right?
Yes, it is.
Um, if you could please give me some clarification. I know postage is extremely expensive, uh, for printing.
Yes, it is.
Um, I, I know, but, um, and also, um, what, we're going to be adding four more issues of the now, correct?
Yes, we are.
Four more issues. And could you please sort of, you know, just to clarify, you know, um, are we using, I remember that we went through that, and we are using the best and the, and, and the lowest bid for the printing?
Yes, we are.
But could you please, just for clarification, just explain where the monies is going?
Let's see here, yes. Fiscal impact. Well, I'll read the fiscal impact. The existing budget has an allocation of $40,000 for the postage and printing services. That's currently for the bi-monthly publication, what equates as six issues currently for the year. Currently, the cost posted is $21,000 and $18,600 for the printing services. The fiscal impact for the additional four issues is $26,380 to be charged to the business improvement tax, and sub to the city council approval of the public hearing tonight, which it was just approved. The four additional issues, the $26,380 is broken up into two categories, printing, $12,400, and that equates to four additional issues, as well as postage, which is $13,980.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I make a motion that we, passes.
Second? Second, any objections? See none, so move. All right, the next consideration of consultant service agreement with Cosmo Companies. Uh, so at this point, who is gonna be talking on the, so this is a, this is not a public, public, public hearing? No, no public hearing. All right, so at this point, council members have any, any questions?
Yes.
Yes, there is Councilmember Cruz Baca.
Yes, I, I do. This is for number 11, or shall I?
Yes, number 11.
Number 11. Um, yes, um, like I had said earlier, um, the, what concerns, I took a look at the contract, and these are my questions. Um, how much of this, our staff time will you be? I'm going to break it down because it's several questions that I have. Is it all right if Mr. Davenport comes up?
Yes, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Um, how much of our staff time will you be needing in order for you to accommodate all the, and, and to fulfill all the agreement that you have here? Will you be using, do you need any of our staff time to help you with that?
Uh, we don't. We actually just ask for current information that the city may have, and then we do make a presentation, uh, to the staff and the city council all at once. That would be a quick presentation, 15 minutes. And, uh, if staff desires to meet with certain retail tenants, we would be there, but that would be at their request, and that would be according to what retailers they wanna bring into the city. So it would be very minimal. We're able to do the study and the implementation, uh, using our time.
Also, um, I would like, you have in your, the agreement here about a third-party vendor. I would like for the city council to approve that before you bring in a third-party vendor.
Absolutely, yeah.
Do you see, do you see where that is?
I do.
Okay. Because I just feel that at this time, we might be spending more money than what the agreement is, and we need to be able to approve that.
Absolutely, and that...
Because it could be any amount of money, as far as whatever goes, you know?
That would be at the request of the city, so we don't just bring in, uh, that's correct. So we don't just bring in a third-party vendor unless it's at the request of the city.
Okay, does it say that? Because it doesn't say that in the agreement I'm reading. It doesn't say that it's at the request of the city. Could you change that?
So there is, uh, according to the agreement, that there is a not to exceed?
Yes. But I would like for it to come...
I could discuss that with staff, sure.
Could you please? Because I would like for, and that's just me, I don't know if the, I mean, I would really like to see that, before you bring in a third-party vendor, that we make the approval, so that we see how much that's going to cost.
Right, we don't usually bring in a third-party vendor. That's in there as a just in case the city requests it.
Uh, could we remove it, then, if you don't use it? Could we remove it from the agreement?
Councilmember Baca, I don't know, if the attorney could clarify that statement, can it be amended?
Um, Councilmember Pacheco, you can amend a contract from the dais on a vote.
Okay, how, how would you amend that?
Well, we, the amend, it would just be that that particular number and that clause would not be included in the agreement.
Not, not be included? Okay, would you...
Not be included.
Councilmember Baca, just for clarification, could you tell me where that is?
Okay, let me ask the vendor, is that something you'd be in agreement with, or you would, or what would you?
Yes, if the city has, you know, no request for us to bring on a third-party vendor, we wouldn't need that, sure.
Okay.
Do you recall where in the contract that is, the third-party vendor language?
Is it five, possibly? Five?
Five?
On page six of the proposal, it's in the attachment A.
Turn it, I can't find it, I'm sorry. I apologize. I made my notes, but I didn't put the page number. Oh, on, it's the, the right to utilize others, number seven. City reserves the right to, to utilize others to perform work similar to the services provided within. That means that we're going to be repeating the same thing that you're saying.
All right, and so your amendment, uh, Councilmember Baca, is what? Just to eliminate that paragraph?
Page one, number seven.
Just to eliminate, is that what's...
Eliminate number seven.
Okay, so that's the motion?
Yes, I make a motion.
All right, so there's a, there's, there's a motion, that's for the amendment, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a motion by Councilmember Cruz Baca to amend the contract. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second? Any objections? See none, so move. Okay, so that will be brought back, uh, with the amendments?
Does it need to be brought back, or just...
I have, I have one more question for him.
Okay, that's fine.
I have more questions for him.
All right.
It does not need to be brought back. That amendment can be incorporated into it, and it can be passed like that.
Yes.
All right.
Um, the other one is the conflict of interest clause. Um, that one is number 14, and it's consultant agrees that any conflict or potential conflict of interest shall be fully disclosed, and I would really appreciate that you disclose because I have, I have seen you on several occasions in your company with some of our council members.
I don't believe...
You know them, you know them well.
I don't believe we have a conflict of interest, there's been...
I, I think it is a conflict of interest, personally.
I don't know, I, I just disagree with what your statement is, because I've seen you with him too.
Part me?
I've seen you with him for lunch, and you've met with him too.[1565.82]
There's public events-
I've seen you, Cruz.
I've never met-
But anyways, let's just move on, I don't know what-
Mr. Davenport, have I ever met with you?
I'm not, I mean, we've, I've seen everyone at public meetings, public events-
I've never met with you.
I'm not sure of anything other than that.
The other one is number 15, which is political activity and lobbying certification, and consultant may not conduct any activity, including any payment to any person, officer, employee, and that's also for fundraising during campaigns.
Correct, yeah, we have not.
Okay, that, I just needed clarification, that's all. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm, I just need clarification for myself, because like I said, I have seen you at different events, and I think that that needs to be brought up.
Understood, thank you.
And I would like a report every month, please, because sometimes some of the consultants that we've hired have sort of fallen behind in giving a report as to what they're doing and, and their, their scope of the work that they're doing. I would like to see a report, at least to the CEO, every month, if you please.
In our, yes, in our billing statement, it does say what work was done, and then we do state in the, in the, in the proposal that we would present in eight to 12 weeks, so that's the full report, but there's an update on the billing as well, yeah.
Okay, and also, I would like for you to open up a community meeting, so that you, so that the public can be aware of what you're doing, and to reach out to the community, so that they can also give you their input as to what they would like to see.
I'm sorry, I don't think that's in the scope of work, that part of it.
They're checking the demographics.
Yeah, but that, that, they need data, not going to the public, and it's data, that's gathering data through other means.
How are they going to gather data if they don't meet with the people?
He knows, but it's not having meetings.
I, I feel that if you're going to do a demographic study, you need to find out what the people really need, and what, what, what would they like to see in Baldwin Park. I'm sorry, I disagree. In order to do a, a, a complete scoping, and to come up with a complete report, you need to reach out to the people, not just walk around the city.
One or two meetings, I mean, how many meetings would you want? Would you do two meetings of, of public outreach?
We do have one public meeting already in the scope.
Okay.
And that is a presentation to the council, and there's, there's, there's welcome to have input from, from anyone at that point, yeah.
Okay, can you have another one, where you'd have the, a public input meeting here in front of the council, and maybe in, in a few months?
I would have to get back to you on that one.
And also, and also, I, I still feel uncomfortable, and it's, you know, and I'm sure you do wonderful work, but I still feel uncomfortable with the expense. I, I feel we've gotten four consultants so far, including, we've got Del Sol, and we have yet to see a report from Del Sol. We recently got a report from the Ames, and they want to extend their contract. We've got Cosmont, and we have California Consulting. Now, California Consulting is pretty on top of sending what they're working on, and the, and the grants that they're working on, and what they're looking at, but-
There's a lot of consultants in this city, I mean, from police department, parks and recreation.
I, I hadn't, I hadn't finished, I'm sorry. And I think that, I know that we have a lot of consultants, but it seems like everyone thinks that we're spending money like drunken sailors, and I, it concerns me that until we can get some type of a, a handle on what's going on with the other consultants that are on board, that we should step back a little bit and take a good look, because it, to me, it still seems that all the consultants are basically, whether you call it demographics or whatever, that everyone is basically doing the same thing, which is economic development, and bringing in retail, or bringing in businesses, or taking a look at what can happen in the downtown area of Baldwin Park. I haven't heard from any of the consultants say anything about affordable housing, what are we going to do about the homeless? I haven't heard any of that, and yet we're paying all this money. So that's, those are just my thoughts, thank you.
All right, okay, councilmembers, anyone else have any questions?
Mayor?
Yes, councilmember.
I mean, I just want to, I just want to put things into some context. The item that we're looking at today is related to Cosmont, and would you give a brief overview on that, just as a refresher for the council, because I, I think that it's getting confused with other items, and if you could just kind of, you know, hit on, on the points, the, the highlights, and we can, we can, you know, make it any differentiation if needed after. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Excuse me, if, if she's referring to me, I don't, I'm not, I'm not confused. I, I know exactly, remember, you came back after I had asked to, to modify or to amend your contract. I'm very, very familiar with your, with your agreement, I, I feel that that's an insult to say that I'm confused, I'm not. I know exactly what your company does, that's what concerns me. I think everyone's colliding with each other, that's all.
I, I made a request, if you could-
Okay, go ahead.
-give a brief overview, thank you.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Cosmont Companies has been around for 30 years, Mr. Cosmont was the city manager, and also has been doing economic development consulting for cities throughout the state. At any, at any given time, 90 or 100-plus cities are, are clients, and we aim to generate tax revenue for cities, promote economic development, and promote investment within cities. So on, on this particular project, we would be looking at an economic and consumer profile, where we would look at how consumers are spending money, what times of day they're spending money, both residents and businesses, and we would also look at cities around Baldwin Park, so that you can understand who, in a city, city-wise, who your competition is, and how you rate and compare to your neighboring cities. And then you, you would look at, how can we attract residents from other cities, and businesses from other cities, to spend their money in Baldwin Park?
And if I could stop you there, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but can you, can you tell us a little bit about how you capture that data? How you capture the data of, you know, the, this, the buying trends, the spending trends here in Baldwin Park, and-
Sure.
-founding communities?
Yeah, absolutely. So that data, that is available through the Bureau of Labor Statistics, through the Census, and through ESRI, which is a program that, that cities, developers, and the economic development community uses to, to provide that data on spending potential, retail potential, retail demand in certain areas, and that's all driven to find out what, how much money consumers in general have to spend in a certain area. So then after that, does that answer your question, after that?
So basically, are you looking at volumes of data with ESRI?
Yes, yeah, volumes of data, and calculating, and, and analysis, I won't go into it, but it is a lot of analysis, and that analysis would bring us to, then we would present to the council with that, and provide a retail spending and leakage, so are we bringing in retail sales, are we bringing in residents and businesses from other cities to spend in the city, or are we leaking? Are, are residents and businesses leaving the city and spending somewhere else, which, which you would want to know that, and in what, in what categories? Apparel, groceries, home improvement, you want to know all those areas, so that you can understand which retailers that you should be reaching out to, and where you should be spending your attention attracting businesses. So that would be the second part of our analysis, where we would do the, the leakage and surplus, and after that, we would present, that with that analysis, we would come up with a strategy with, with the council and with the, with staff, and we would present during a council meeting, that strategy. And afterwards, when everyone decides on what the strategy would be, we would go to the implementation phase, and we would meet with individual retailers, already knowing that these retailers are going to be interested in the city, because there are dollars, and there are, there's spending potential within the city, the retailers want to see that, and they'll be more interested in, in meeting, and in moving into the city. So it's analysis, strategy, and implementation, and heavy on the implementation, I'll, I'll say that members of our staff are part of national organizations that focus on retail development and economic development attraction.
And I just want to point out a couple of items that you mentioned, the leakage study, that's important, we, we need that, and we need to update that in our city, and also having that brokerage ability to go out and meet with potential retailers, and meet with potential businesses that are interested in coming to our city. Those are two holes that have existed in our, in our community, and so I just wanted to give you that overview, and touch on, you know, some of the areas where there have been voids, and so there is no overlap. We haven't had a leakage study in a number of years, and we have not had the capacity for a brokerage style, you know, position, and so those were two items that were important to me, at least in this, you know, the scope, and in this, in, in hiring Cosmont. So if there are no other questions, I'll go ahead and move to approve.
A second? All right, any objections?
Yes.
Okay, madam, we're going to go and go to roll call.
I also want to just make a statement, not an objection per se, but, you know, I understand what councilmember Cruz Baca is saying, and just to be very clear, like, we really respect, you know, I respect your work, I know your company, I also respect other people, other companies, and I know that's a different issue, I'm just, I understand her point, it's really difficult, and we're trying to approve two contracts at the very same time, and I know not from your perspective, but when we see it from our perspective, it does seem there's an overlap, and we're not talking about pennies, I mean, it's thousands and thousands of dollars, so when we question, it's not necessarily an attack on the company, or an attack on what the capabilities are of a company, but we have to really look at these very carefully, because we're not a city that's overflowing in money, we just want to make sure that we're using it correctly, and that it's really going to benefit the, the city. We were talking about earlier in the upstairs meeting, that there's a lot of things, and this is my personal opinion, that I know that we have been doing in-house, and even though we haven't done it before, we've also opened up new positions to do that specifically, and then because we are being very progressive these days, we're being approached by a lot of like nonprofit organizations that could do some of the work, I just really want to make sure that, you know, like, when councilmember Cruz Baca is asking questions, it's not misunderstood that we, you know, we're just trying to derail anything, we really just want to be mindful that this is a city, we have a staff that we need to sustain, and we need to ask the questions. And so I do appreciate that she does ask the questions, and I personally feel a little concerned, because we have your contract, which, like I said, I respect your, your company, what you do, and what you can provide, but at the same council meeting, we have yet another consultant with another contract, with another $10,000 a month, and when you put all this together, then it just seems way larger when you're looking at it from our end. So, again, I just want to really say that I appreciate when the questions are asked, and I hope that you don't take it personally, or anybody up here for that matter, we are the guardians of this community, we have to be asking the tough questions, and, and sometimes I feel that the questions are kind of brushed off, and pushed down. I like the ability to, to ask questions upstairs, I was trying to ask questions, and it's like, oh, we don't have time, let's cut it. We have to have time, we have to ask the questions, and we want the ability to ask, and if we, our questions are not answered in that meeting, we want the ability to push it over, so we can continue to ask the questions. So that's a little frustrating for me, because, again, because I respect your company, and I know what you can do for our community, then I'm forced to speak up, when I know I'm not opposing you, but I just, again, I'm opposing the fact that I also haven't answered questions, and that's just the unfortunate part, because I appreciate what you're doing, what you can do for us, but at this point too, I feel like I need more information, so I'm sorry, just on those basis, I'm just going to have to say that. I wish we can push it over, so you and I can sit down, thank you.
All right, and so at this point, there is a, there was a motion to approve, and the second, and there was one objection, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and go into roll call, so madam city-
Mr. Mayor, could I clarify?
Monica Garcia?
I just want to clarify that the contract is the one that was presented-
An amendment.
-with the amendment that was offered.
That is correct.
Yes.
All right, so at this point, let's go ahead and to the vote, thank you.
Mayor Pacheco?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz Baca? No. Councilmember Susan Rubio?
No, and I would like the opportunity to still sit down with you later, thank you.
Yes, the motion is approved, the vote is three, excuse me, three, two. All right, so at this point, yes, councilmember, yes.
Can I, because, I mean, I agree that there should be dialogue, and if there are questions, then we should have a conversation about this, and we should have dialogue. And what we just heard is that Cosmont is proposing a demographic study using analysis gathered through ESRI, the Census Department of Labor, along with a leakage study, and along with some brokerage capabilities. That's okay, I, I'll call you up. And then what, the report that we heard earlier-
You're confusing it now.
Yeah, the plans which we're going to take up in, you know, in just a little bit here, there is, there are four tasks that were identified. Creation and initial management of downtown partnership, coordinate all bicycle-related activities, direct, implement workforce development strategy, and economic development. And so you can, can already see how they're falling under different buckets, but if I look, of the four items that were presented to us earlier, if I look at the one that seems most relevant, it's economic development, not one of the items mentions the three points that were just made in this current presentation. And I just think it's worth pointing out, because I just don't want there to be any confusion. For the economic development, you know, that was presented earlier, there are a number of initiatives, and I think I'll hold off on, on touching on those until that public hearing, but there are a number of initiatives that are pretty specific, and neither one of them relate to the demographic study, the leakage study, or the brokerage capabilities. So I understand, yeah, it can, and I, you know, it can be confusing, because it falls under the umbrella of economic development, but, you know, like I mentioned, there have been holes, and so we're trying to fill those holes now, and also considering some kind of new initiatives to bring it all together, to tie it all together. So I've said, you know, enough on this item, and-
Mayor?
Yes, councilmember Cruz Baca.
Councilmember Garcia brought up some important things, and in sort of analyzing it, I feel that we need to do one before we do the other. We need to do the study on what the leakage is, and what is the retail, and all of that, in order for us to be able to move forward with the plan as to what's going to happen at that point. It's like, we don't know what we need, in a sense, even though I think we do, but because we are doing the study with Cosmont, Cosmont will come back with the answers. When the answers are with us, then we can move forward and say, okay, now we're going to tackle this, this, and that. To me, it just seems like both things going on at the same time, that's confusing, because you don't know what you need to do with AIM, until Cosmont comes up with the study. Did I make myself clear?
You may make a statement. Prior to the Cosmont, the only that have done a study so far has been the, the group that's coming, Ames, because they did a study prior, if you remember, and did a presentation, so Cosmont hasn't really done anything, they, they've done a lot of the homework to come to the implementation part that we're talking about today. Both groups have a different element that they're, that they're doing, so they have to do them together. Also, staff has worked with both Ames and Cosmont to make sure there was no overlap, and, and, you know, this is their, the staff coming to us and saying, these are the needs, because this report comes from the staff, and they spend a lot of time going to the consultants and talking about them, and both consultants have been here at least once or twice, doing presentations, and, and at each one, you said, I'm going to sit down with you and talk to you, whether or not you did, I don't know, but I remember you-
I didn't meet with Mr. Davenport, I didn't meet with-
I'm not saying, but you, you said, so you've had plenty of time to go over it, and, and, you know, and look at it, so I'm just saying, you know, that there was plenty of time, staff put this together, and staff is saying what the needs are, and so to move forward, you know, we, we need to just, just start going and doing implementation, no more study, just start to get things going in that, in that direction. So mayor, if you want to open up the next-
I just, I'm sorry, but you know, when you say staff put it together, almost gives the illusion that staff went out and got them and brought them in to do, staff were told to speak to them and see, but I'm not sure those, the recommendations came from staff, unless they can clarify, I don't think they're the ones that listed what's needed. But, you know, and I agree, and the reason I'm saying, because I, I would like Cosmont to come in and do what he needs to do, and that's exactly what I'm saying, I think you could do the work to provide us a foundation, so then we can move on with the other, and, and again, it's that brush of, when you have 120,000 contract on one, and then you have thousands and thousands of dollars on the other, and then you put it together, and they're kind of like stepping on each other's toes, it, it worries me a little. Like I said, I think both can provide valid work for a city, I think both of them are necessary for a city, but I just don't see them together right now, and, and again, I'm, maybe they could, but it's that uneasiness of them overlapping, because on one, if I look at one, and I know we're talking about two different contracts, but one contract talks about economic development, and one of the listed island, items, and then you see the other one, same thing, coordinate economic development, and we just hired a full-time economic development person, we created that position, which we didn't have, so they can pursue these things, and so now we have the job that we created for this specific reason, then we have Cosmont doing that, and then we have Ames doing that, and these are thousands and thousands of dollars, and again, I don't want to discredit both of you, both of the companies, because I know both of you guys are valuable, but it's this overlap that has me a little bit, just reservations, and you know that I value both companies, and I really would like to see Cosmont come in and do the work, so then we can provide you the information, so I'm sorry, those were my thoughts.
Yes, councilmember.
I'd like to make a motion for item 12, the staff recommendation wanted to.
I'm sorry, I have a comment, I'm sorry.
Okay, but I made a motion.
Okay, there's a motion, there's a motion on the floor for item 12, which is the consideration of consultant service agreement with Ames Consulting Services, is there a second?
Can, you know what, I'll make this, the, I'll second the motion, can I also ask that we look at a six-month contract, and that we do, you know, that we look at-
Do I do a six-month, and evaluate in six months to continue?
Yeah.
Okay, you could make that amendment, so, so we're doing, the amendment is to do six months, bring it back to the council for evaluation to continue services.
Councilmember Pacheco, would you like to make that amendment, and by motion, and pass the contract here today, or do you want to bring it back?
No, we'd like to pass it as a motion, as a amendment.
Okay, if you wait just a moment, so I can identify the area, and then make the exact change on the record.
Okay.
And I just want to add, and I agree with, like, the, the monthly reporting, because, you know, you pointed out that Ames did work for us before, and at this point, I can't show the residents anything tangible, that we can say that's why we spend thousands and thousands of dollars, there's nothing tangible, and again, after six months, I want to be able to say, this is why we spent $120,000 on one, this is why we spent $47,000 on the other, and we need to be able to show something for it, and I know that a lot of it is recommendations, but at this time, I just feel that, you know, we don't have that kind of money to spend, so I really need to be able to be responsive to our community, and say, this is where your, your money went. So I also would like to see a report of, of things being done, as are being done, just to keep us informed, I, you know, I like to be able to respond to my community, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, councilmember.
Mayor, for the record, I would like to say that I have met, in, in reference to councilmember Pacheco's comment, I have met, they've been very gracious and have met with me on several occasions, and we've had very nice, very great conversations in working out plans, however, I did reach out to Mr. Davenport when he was at the last council meeting, and I've yet to hear from him. I have never met with Mr. Davenport.
All right, whatever. Mayor?
Yes, councilmember.
I made a motion, there was a second with an amendment.
If I may, councilmember Pacheco, the motion and the second was to pass this contract, but there's now been an amendment, so what we need to do is, we have to file, we have to do a motion to pass this amendment, then you have to do a new motion in a second to pass the new amended contract. So your motion, as I understand it, is to amend the contract under paragraph three, under time for performance, the contract shall now read, "The terms of this agreement shall be effective for a period of six months, beginning on the date of execution of this agreement, period." Is that your amendment?
That is my amendment.
Is there a second?
And then, was there an amendment as far as a report?
A monthly report.
Or, maybe, maybe a report at, at the end of six months?
No, a monthly report, please.
Okay, I guess city managers- Okay, I guess, uh, city manager, is there, is there a reporting status on this contract?
No.
So that would have to be part of an amendment and motion if that's what you want to include.
Okay, so put an amendment that they would report every six months to the city manager under current activities.
Are you telling us every six months or a month?
I'm sorry, every month.
I would say every six months because it, it's gonna take some time to put some of these initiatives together.
Every three months, maybe quarterly?
Every three months.
Okay, so I would say quarterly.
But I think at the very least, it's not necessarily what they've done, just keep our, you know, CEO and maybe us, just inform us to the process, what the steps are. Not a report that's completed, but just information. I mean, as councilmembers, we, we want to know just what the steps are. So don't feel obligated to put this, you know, 30-page report. Just give us an update, what's been done on a monthly basis.
California Consulting does that. California Consulting, as soon as they're attacking a grant or they're, they're writing a report, I get a whole list and I'm sure everybody does too, a whole list. It could be every week, it could be every two weeks, but they give us a complete report as to what they're doing. I don't think that's a lot of work.
I'm not asking, I'm just fine. Put down a month, everyone, but I think in general, staff provides every month a status of, of all activities and contracts. And I get that every month. I mean, every contract's on there, everybody's reported. I don't know what's on it. But anyways, that's fine. You'll get the 30 days.
Okay, so right now, the contract says consultant shall report back to council with quarterly recommendations.
Okay.
No, monthly.
You want to change that?
Monthly, yes, please, two monthly, two monthly.
I think it was suggested every three months. Is that correct?
Every, every three months.
Okay.
What do you get at that?
So in addition to the amendment that I just read, under paragraph three, the additional amendment shall now read, "Consultant shall report back to council every three months with recommendations or as necessitated through ongoing developments." Is that your amendment?
That, that is my amendment.
All right, so at this point, there, there, there was a motion, there was a second and there was an objection. Am I correct? Am I wrong? All right, so at this point, we're gonna take roll call.
This is just for the amendment.
For, for the amendment, yes.
Objections for the amendment?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco? Mayor Patain, Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
No.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Yes, okay, the motion passes for one. All right, so it's-
The amendment.
Now we have the actual contract as amended and we need to pa, uh, a motion to pass the amended contract.
The motion to pass the amended contract.
There's a motion by councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Is there a second?
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
Pass the contract.
Pass the contract.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, okay, there's a second by Vice Mayor Monica Garcia. Any objections?
Yes.
Okay, one objection, uh, Madam City-
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Patain, Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
No.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
No.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Yes, okay, the motion passes three, two. All right, so, yes, councilmember-
I know, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor this, but, um, you know, like I said earlier with the Cosmont, we talked about a demographic study, a leakage study, and then brokerage capabilities. Those were the three points of the Cosmont, um, contract. If I can just quickly read the economic development portion that AIMS is gonna focus on. And again, you know, they're looking at some challenging areas that, um, have been hard to coordinate and to focus on. But here are some of the initiatives that, that they propose in their contract. And it's work jointly with county and state partners to approach Verizon, to develop an adaptive reuse vision of the facility that would incorporate a startup or incubator program, concept for local entrepreneurs. And, you know, for a, a long time, we've been talking about how we can use Verizon, how we can approach Verizon for a better use. And this is a project in and of itself. In conjunction, second initiative, in conjunction with the County of Los Angeles, begin exploring the feasibility of a joint development scenario for their respective properties in the east end of downtown. Again, another, you know, another project, um, initiate, and this is, this is different than, um, you know, like a, a leakage study because the leakage study is about retail. It's about what our consumers are doing, the patterns, the behaviors. You know, where are they spending? So, um, the third initiative, initiate visioning exercise with public and private stakeholders to determine the best path forward in mo, in regards to the future redevelopment of the east industrial zone. Also, something that we've talked about, this is, you know, heavier planning. Assist city, uh, staff to analyze all incoming housing development projects. Work with city staff to coordinate all economic development and marketing outreach activities. Work with Balden Park officials to update the citywide business improvement area ordinance. I mean, you know, this is very ambitious. Analyze feasibility of creating a downtown specific fund for its SBA loan program funding to incentivize the expansion and attraction of new businesses to the downtown area. And that's something that could certainly complement what Cosmont is doing. Because Cosmont will be looking at what businesses would be interested based on our economic base here in Balden Park and the surrounding community. And AIMS would be looking at what incentives, what, what funding could be available, what infrastructure funding. Um, the, the next initiative, work with the County of Los Angeles to review provisions of AB2 and enhanced infrastructure financing districts. Just talked about that. Next initiative, to support the creation of a restaurant row downtown, draft and approve a master permit sidewalk dining ordinance. Yet another initiative that could complement the Cosmont. And, and sure, we can talk about, we're gonna bring these businesses, but how we really look closely at our permitting processes and are they streamlined for the businesses. So that's certainly something that will complement. In coordination with the downtown public-private partnership or agreed-upon partnership organization, create parameters for neighborhood economic survey. And, um, you know, that's something that perhaps is a little bit more of what you were speaking to, Cruz, is like a focus group, you know, economic. So the way that I see this is there's, there are opportunities to complement and I would also encourage sta, encourage staff, you know, um, wherever you see that there's an opportunity for overlap or duplication, please, you know, um, notify us because we do not want to be doing that. We, we want the, we want these synergies of our new focus on downtown to result in, um, you know, real deliverables. And we don't want there to be overlap, we don't want there to be waste, um, you know, things like that. So anyway, just wanted to, to point that out.
Mayor?
All right, thank you, uh, councilmember-
I appreciate councilmember Garcia, but I still believe that if Cosmont has, changes, whatever it may be, and you've already come up with a plan, the best thing that I can say is, the example that I can use is, you're bringing in my favorite Chipotle to the corner of Clark and Main. And Cosmont comes and says, no, that's not gonna work there. What's going to work there is a Marshalls if we take over the entire shopping center. It's, you've done all this work, which is great work. I, I know your work and Cosmont as well. I just think that it's, I just think that it's premature and I'll keep repeating that because Cosmont should do the work at least for a few months and then bring you in to do your, your good work. Thank you.
I also want to just remind the council that just last year, we had the other consultants that were focusing on our specific plan. They did months and months of work, community outreach, and that was specifically the purpose, to see how we can, you know, um, increase our economic development, what businesses we can bring there to provide this whole plan. And it's essentially the same thing. And so I feel once again, and just like Cruz, it feels like duplication after duplication, which is great if I can at this point show my residents something for it and say, this is the fruition. This is what happened during the process and this is what I can deliver to you so they can at least be comfortable where we're spending their money. But at this point, and again, you know, we can all agree, you know, we had already paid AIMS before for, for another, you know, consultation, for them to go out and look at this. I know because I met with them last year and we talked about what we can do in the downtown. And it, it just, I feel like we keep doing it over and over again. And so that, that's what I have a hard time with. I think like even last year when we met with AIMS, I wish we would have, you know, implemented something. We would have came to the end of some kind of tangible thing that I can show my community, you know? And I know we talked about great ideas, but everything that we're talking about today, we talked about last year and we had already paid for that contract. So again, I just feel really badly because I think both of you guys can provide great services, but I just wish it wasn't at the same time. That's my only concern.
I just have a quick comment.
Go ahead. We need to move on, you guys.
Okay, go ahead. We'll, I'll comment after.
All right, so at this point, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and go over to the options for city council to consider for annual auditing service. And, uh, this point, let me direct staff to bring this back, okay? Yes? Cause they, there, there was also a conflict here.
Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
I just want to direct staff since we're- I don't know what the contract says, but-
Right.
Let's give that and then try to change our minds with people.
Okay. Okay, all right, so we're bringing the, we're bringing it back.
Mayor?
Yes, there was a conflict, so, excuse me, allow the city, uh, excuse me, legal counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was a recommendation by staff to take the top three of, from the 2014 request for proposal and interview those particular audit firms. I wanted to identify for the council that one of those firms, Rogers, Anderson, Melody and Scott, is the employer of our, uh, former interim finance director, Terry. And so there's a conflict of interest with that firm because they cannot audit their former employee.
Yeah, we'll remove that.
But that, that firm has to be removed and we have to add another one in its place. So just when it comes back, uh, for, for informational purposes.
I also want to just encourage us, only because, you know, we, we're doing the audit for two years and we won the committee. When some of the, the companies came back, it's just one of these things that you don't kind of pay attention at times. Like some of them were the lowest bidders, but it wasn't that they were the best fit for Baldwin Park. Like when you look at the overall contract, even though it seemed less ex, you know, less expensive to the city, the term was shorter or, there's a lot of little, um, tricks that they were playing so they can seem like they were the lowest bidder. So I just encourage us to look very closely because what the numbers we see here is not enough. We have to see what the scope of work will be because when we did that specific audit, we were looking at the scope of work. And even though they were less expensive, they were doing less work than other companies. So at the end, we went with the best fit, the best company and the lowest bidder when you look at the overall, uh, scope of work. So that's the only thing I would say. Let's not necessarily go based on face value. Let's look at the scope of work they're gonna provide. Thank you.
Mayor, I just, I just have concerns with the last firm in terms of reports that were supposed to be submitted were late, were not done and incomplete. So anyways, we could discuss that at the next meeting about performance.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, all right, councilmember, yes.
I'm sorry, are you done?
Go ahead.
Um, at the last council meeting, um, uh, councilmember Garcia mentioned that Brown Armstrong had been fired from the city of Pasadena. And I'm, thanks to CEO Shananiyazi, he sent us a letter from Brown Armstrong stating that they were not fired. There was an RFP that had gone out when the elections for the council in Pasadena were last November. Of course, there was a shift in the council, like with us. And at that point, they, it went out to RFP, they did not make the RFP, they were not fired. They did, they did bring up the findings to the city of Pasadena, but no one paid attention to their findings and sort of like just swept it under the carpet. But in clarification, they were not fired. They just didn't make the, when they made the final decision to hire after the RFP. Thank you.
Okay, uh, all right, so at this point, I'm gonna go and move to item 14. Let me just, I, I think, let me just go by this, the, the recreation and community services. So I'm gonna move to appoint, uh, Ms. Joanne Watkins.
I'll second it.
Thank you, uh, second, any objections? See none. Also Jean Ayala.
Second.
I don't know if she's still here. I'll go ahead and, second, any objections? And also Deanna Robles.
Second.
And also Christopher Seines. And I believe we also need an additional one, so let's put that one back out. So we need to recruit a, another person for there.
Well, I want to also, um-
Mayor, have a floor, you had one more.
Let me, let me go over to the, the planning commission. So at this point, I'm gonna move to a point-
But we're going back to the, the last one that you did, like, I just want to, you know, cause you said like, let's put it out, we have a vacant one. I said, you know, Anna Lujan was here earlier too and she's been on the, on that commission, so I just want to also nominate her.
Okay, there's second, any objections?
For what?
Anna Lujan for the Park and Rec.
Okay, I'll, I'll object, I'll object. So at this point, Madam City Clerk, this is to appoint Anna Lujan to Park and Recs. And there's one objection, I object. So at this point, we'll have a vote.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica, I'm sorry. Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Yes.
Mayor Patain, Monica Garcia?
No.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
No.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
No, okay, so the motion is, uh, three, two, so we'll send that out for recruitment. All right, at this point, the planning commission, uh, I know there's one vacant, uh, and I'll go ahead and make a motion for Edith Flores, who's an actual planner from the city of Los Angeles, a longtime resident of the city of Baldwin Park.
Second.
And second, any objections?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Madam City Clerk, this point, there's one objection, so we'll go ahead and, the city treasurer.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
To appoint her, yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
No.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Mayor Patain, Monica Garcia?
Yes.
All right, she's appointed the-
I just want to clarify something.
Okay.
Um, I believe, and the reason that I voted the way that I did, I, I really don't even know her. However, I do feel that the deadline was on March 7th. And after our last council meeting, she was allowed to, she was allowed to still put in an application without it being announced that the applications were open. So I feel that that was not done correctly so that other people could put in the application. I understand that councilmember Garcia wanted a woman, though we had Deanna Robles and we had Joanna Valenzuela that had been, that had applied on time. And now, um, Ms. Flores was given the extension of being able to put in her application so that she could be put on the commission today. I feel that was very unfair.
All right, so at this point, uh, the vote was, uh, three, uh, excuse me, four, four, one. At this point, the housing commission, uh-
Mayor, can we move on to the-
All right, let's go and move the next, uh, housing and personnel, let's toss them out and the recreation.
And also the city appointments, can we move them over one more time?
All right, so we'll do that.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, there were some of them that you had called out.
Yes.
Um, and I just want to make sure that on every one of the ones that you called out, where there was no roll call, there were no objections. In other words, I think there was one where-
Yeah, there was one with, uh, councilmember Cruz Baca, yes. All right, so at this point, we're gonna go and, and, and advertise-
Was it clear on, on who got appointed and who didn't?
Yes, yes, it was clear. Park and Rec, I said, Ms. Jean Ayala, uh, Ms., uh, also, uh, Ms. Joanne Watkins, Christopher Seines and Deanna Robles. And then the planning commission, Edith Flores. So we're gonna do at this point, that, we need one more for Park and Rec, so we're gonna send that back out. The housing will go back out and the personnel will go back out. Okay, okay?
Thank you.
By planning commission, we only have Edith Flores?
Yes, that is correct.
And the other two are going back?
Yes, exactly. The other three, the park and re, recreation and community services, housing and personnel will go out. All right, so at this point, item 15 was requested by councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. We're gonna move that over. So we get out here before 1:00 AM in the morning. All right, so at this point, councilmembers have anything they wish to share before we close?
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, tell Joanne Watson, whom I've known probably for most of my life. Um, and I just want to clarify that it was not my idea to get rid of all the commissioners. You've always done a wonderful job. You know that I was one of the ones that voted for you back a couple of years ago when I first got on the council and I'm very happy to have you back. Thanks.
All right, all right, at this point, uh, councilmembers wishing to share, and now I have something that, let me make sure that, uh, direct staff to bring back the report on the continuing banner program. And I know we're gonna look at what the cost will be, uh, we could do that, I'd appreciate that. All righty, any further questions? If not, I will, I will move for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted, I just wanted to mention that, uh, you, Mayor, had asked to look into eminent domain issue as it relates to Rome II.
Yes.
And I am going to have that information for you at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Whether or not eminent domain can be used in that, uh, Rome II project.
All right, appreciate that. Thank you. This one, I'd like to move for, for adjournment. That's my motion.
Who's second?
Oh, the Rome company, the Rome, the Rome project. Yes.
The mayor had asked for information, informational purposes.
I didn't hear you say Rome, that's why I wasn't-
No, all right. All right, this one, I'd like to move for adjournment. Any objections? See none. So move. Good evening. Vive Baldwin Park. I'm not, I, I can't do it. I gotta go. I, I would. So at this point, study session, I'm gonna go ahead and-